Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic for which it stands.
Under God, indivisible.
In justice for all.
That little delay that goes on.
A little late.
Alrighty, well, I'd like to open this up with public comments. This is time for public comments regarding issues or matters not on the agenda, but still within the jurisdiction of the City Council of Huayriaca. Public comments or period is not intended to be a question and answer period or conversations with the council or city staff. Council members when recognized by the mayor may ask questions later, but may, but no action may be taken during the city council during the public comment section of this meeting, except to direct staff to prepare, report, or place an on a future agenda. Please speak from if you're here present, please speak from the podium, state your name just for the records and please address the council as a whole. If you have any documents, please present it to the council and with seven copies. And five minutes is what we normally do on, on this part of the section. But I'm going to ask the, since we have a special presentation that was not being able to put on the agenda at this time, I would ask the council if we could extend that for a maximum of 15 minutes for Ms. Sarah Springfield. That's okay with the council?
That's a little long. 10 minutes.
Well, I think she'll be able to do it in 10 minutes.
Thank you. I do have documents. How do I?
Yes, just go ahead and send them on through there. Great.
Do you guys mind if I remove my mask?
Yes, please. Deaf people here, that's nice to be able to watch your lips so we can see that.
So the documents that I've distributed are the NOFA for the permanent local housing allocation, which I'm here to present the council with some information about. And then the single sheet is just a breakdown of the information that's included in the NOFA. It's just a smaller funding chart that only shows the cities in Siskiyou County. Whereas the NOFA includes all the cities throughout the state of California, so they're all jumbled up in alphabetical order, but broken down with just the Siskiyou County cities there. So I think most of you are aware that I'm here tonight to discuss the permanent local housing allocation, PLHA, and specifically request that the council call a special meeting to explicitly direct city staff to prioritize accessing the city's allocation before the December 31st deadline at the close of this year. So because of the requirement for a public hearing and public comment period before the council can adopt the resolution to apply for the funds, pushing this out to the December 7th meeting does not leave enough time to direct city staff to prepare an application. The public comments and the notice would have to be posted on December 12th to be adopted by the December 22nd meeting. And so we need to act now if we're going to access these funds before the end of the year. So. I just wanted to emphasize that, you know, dozens of people are outside sleeping tonight in the cold. We have on our caseload currently who are sleeping in cars, in RVs, and in tents and are bouncing between unsafe placements. And it's, it's absolutely critical that the council take action on this before to the end of the year to bring this funding into Huayriaca to address the needs of our community, our community that's sleeping out in the cold tonight and to do it before the end of the year. So I've already spoken with Dwayne, with Randy, with Joan about this. For council members who are not yet familiar with this opportunities, a little bit of context about the grant. The permanent local housing allocation is a chunk of funding that's set aside for every jurisdiction in California. So cities and counties can both apply. It's locally generated funds. It's off of a $75 real estate transaction fee. So on every, every real estate document, there's a fee. So this is money that was generated here in Siskiyou County. And cities and counties have to apply to bring it back home. It's directed for housing and homeless services. So no city in Siskiyou County has yet applied for its funds this year and the application has been open since March. There is an average of $117,000 per city per year. Huayriaca by far has the largest allocation in Siskiyou County. The 2019 and 2020 allocations total 256,000. Like I said, it's been open since March and not a single city has applied. So there's over $1.6 million that's sitting in state coffers right now that has our name on it that we just have to do the work to bring it back home. So I've been going around to different city council meetings throughout the last, through, through November, speaking with different cities about the availability of these funds. Most of the cities were not aware that these funds were available. I wanted to bring that to their attention and then also bring their attention to, you know, the critical need that we have for youth services, for youth who are experiencing homelessness. So Fort Jones and Montague already pledged to direct their allocations to services for homeless youth, but neither city has the capacity to apply for the funds. So they indicated that if Huayriaca will apply for the funds, that they will pool their funds with Huayriaca for a youth shelter here in Huayriaca, operating expenses for youth shelter. These funds can be used for either housing or for services, but using it for housing is, is a little more difficult. That's how the county is using its allocation and it's sort of having a difficult time parsing out the legalities of that. It's, it's a little more complicated and nuanced to use it to actually purchase property and renovate real property and to operate a housing program. Using it for operating expenses is a much simpler way to use these funds. And especially to apply to use these funds when we're on such a tight deadline for the application. So right now, so I went to end the city council meeting last night too, and Etna did not vote to move forward, but they indicated strong interest and I'm going back to them in two weeks. And they expect to vote to also pool their funds, which brings us to 522,000 available now from 2019 and 22 allocation or 2019 and 2020 allocations from Fort Jones, Montague, and Etna. So that doesn't even include Huayriaca's allocation of 256,000. So once we bring that in, we're looking at three quarters of a million dollars that could be accessed now for services for people experiencing homelessness. So I understand that the city is under staffing constraints. I think that's the main concern with applying for these funds. You know, I personally, I understand staffing constraints. I've been a nonprofit ED during a pandemic. I understand how difficult it is, but I think measured against what homeless youth experience daily, we have an obligation to navigate around those constraints, especially when these resources are available. So because the city manager indicated to me that staff capacity is the primary barrier to applying for these funds, we actually have.
Join the meeting.
We actually have a community-based solution. A community member, Marie Caldwell, she's the executive director of Siskiyou Works. She's incredibly experienced and skilled at writing grant applications. And she has stepped forward and volunteered to prepare the application on behalf of the city or in partnership with the city or support the city in doing the application, what however the city best decide, you know, whatever level of support the city decides that they need to get this application in on time. So she was unable to be here tonight, but she has reviewed the NOFA. She reviewed the guidelines and she found them within her capacity. And she gave me the green light tonight to speak on her behalf and say that she is willing to take that on. So there will be some, there is, with the concern of staff capacity, there will be a need for staff to administrate the grant once the funds are here, right? The application term is five years, so there will be staffing needs over that five-year term. But there are resources for that too. So if, if Huayriaca applies for the full funding available that through its allocation in other cities, so that's that, you know, three quarter million dollars. There's $39,000 that's available for local administration now from the 2019 and 2020 allocations. So we're not even looking at the current year's allocations of this renewable and ongoing funding. There's money now that can be used for administration. So the application is for five years period between Etna, Fort Jones, Montague, and Huayriaca. That's 1.8 million over five years, just those four cities. And that's $90,000 that's available for grant administration through the local 5% that's allowable through the grant. So to reemphasize, we need action now to bring these funds home, right? These are our funds already. They have our name on them. And then once they're here, again, the city does not need to take on the burden of administering the services. That's also accounted for in the grant. The city can, you know, produce a notice of funding ability, an RFP, request for a proposal for providers to pitch services for you, for people experiencing homelessness, for youth experiencing homelessness in Huayriaca. So our agency, Youth Empowerment Siskiyou, would absolutely be an applicant for those funds. We would apply for operating expenses for a youth shelter. We have a building just down the street that we purchased and renovated last year with the intent of using it for a shelter in the future when the chance came up to grab on to operating funds. Those funds are here now. We have the building. It's, it's incredibly frustrating that all of these administrative, all this administrative red tape is preventing us from providing these services now when we are ready to go and we have the resources to do it. So just to give you guys a little bit more context about the services that we would be providing to unaccompanied and homeless youth. We would mostly focus on unaccompanied youth in the age, in age 13 to 25 range who often hit the streets out of foster care. They've experienced enormous amounts of abuse and neglect before becoming homeless. And once they are homeless, they are statistically much more likely to experience additional victimization. They're incredibly vulnerable. This past year, we've been providing case management services. Our case managers here on the call also. And it's, it's just been devastating. You know, we, we provide supportive services. We get the, get them connected with the available resources in the community. We get them signed up for all of the programs that we can. We help them build job skills. We teach them life skills like budgeting and shopping. And at the end of the day, it doesn't matter how many supportive skills you, supportive services you provide. If at the end of the day, they're going home and sleeping in a tent on the sidewalk or in an RV parked outside of Green Horn or in a car parked somewhere, you know, under a street light so they feel safe. It's, it's a ridiculous burden for them to bear when they are engaging with us fully for services and there are no options for them to be safely housed. So our agency has grown and developed over the last four years. We started working as a CASA program and our values in, in working with homeless youth, you know, remain the same. We think that all youth, all people deserve, are worthy of safety and care. All young people deserve safety and care from the adults in their lives and their community. And this is an opportunity for the Huayriaca City Council to provide homeless youth in Huayriaca and throughout the county with that safety and care. So we have the building, we're ready to turn into shelter. The state has this money. Fort Jones and Montague have put in. We have somebody who's willing to complete the application. So really the only thing that we're missing now is buying from the city of Huayriaca. And we need swift and decisive action to get this done before the end of the year. So again, I urge you guys to call a special meeting so we can have a full discussion of this and I can answer your questions. Every city that I've spoken to so far has a different set of questions, you know, and I'm happy to, to answer those at a special meeting. And I urge you to direct staff to prepare this application or to partner with Marie to do that and to get it done by the December 31st deadline. Please do not let this opportunity go to waste while we have community members that are sleeping on the streets. Thank you.
Sir, I got a question for you before you leave. I think you gave us at the homeless meeting statistic on how many youth individuals, when percentage wise, when they're homeless during their, when they're a child or a kid, how many of them become permanently homeless in the future as far as an adult?
I don't know about that statistic. I, I know that, I think one of the statistics that I gave at that meeting was that, so at our last point in time count, um, over just under a third of our county's homeless population was under age 25. So a significant portion, you know, and, and they're split pretty evenly between under age 18 and then in that 18 to 25 age range. So I'm not sure, but I can get you that information for the.
Must have been shared at that meeting, but.
Brittany, who is also on this.
I think Brittany might have shared that with us. At that point, yeah, because I remember it was a high percentage was when they're homeless, when they're a youth, they become homeless permanently in their lifetime. So it's sad just anytime we can nip that and now would be the time to do it for sure. So thank you. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
I know we have some other public comments on that. And at this point, I just encourage, we're trying to hold it now for five minutes since we have this presentation, but yes, I'm encouraging anybody else to come forward and speak. So absolutely come on up to the podium. And please, please state your name and everything too for us.
Good evening, council. My name is Jerry Stalker. Wasn't planning on speaking tonight. This, this topic has been on the forefront of my mind for about the last eight or nine months or so. I own a small retail business in town and I'd love to, where was the lady that was just speaking? I'd love to get in touch with you sometime and get some more information. I'll try to wrap this up as soon as I can. I'm going to say about nine months ago, not to get too personal, but I was driving down the road and I was speaking to the man above and I asked him why I didn't feel so guilty about going to a church in Huayriaca. The message I got was, excuse me, you don't need to feel guilty because you're going to be starting your own church. And from that day forward, I haven't been able to get this situation off my mind. My vision is to have a foundation that a group of people with different life scars, for example, might be able to offer back to a certain part of the community. For some reason, I could feel a little compelled to help the homeless situation. When I first started my business in Huayriaca, there was a homeless gentleman that hung out in the front of my door and for a couple of days, I, I literally asked myself 100 times how I was going to address this gentleman. So I decided to walk up to him and introduce myself and befriend him like I would anybody else. I got to know him. His name's Doug, severe alcoholic, lost cause in society for the most part. But in, in my time of getting to know him, I bought him a heater, so. And then we moved on to a new location and it was a little bit of a shock that our new location wasn't necessarily the best location for our business, but it did just pursue my interest in this topic because I was right in the middle of it. We've got homeless housing on the left, homeless housing on the right. And I see it every day. I hate to be too graphic. We picked up needles in our parking lot. I picked up human feces off our driveway. There's, I know there's an existing program in place. I know it's there, but I have a feeling it's not complete. The housing part of it, I know you guys have had plans in the past. I apologize for not getting more involved previously. But I had some ideas other than the city of Huayriaca taking on the burden of owning the property, maintaining the property. You have a provision in your zoning. The particular one I was looking at was a conditional use permit under commercial housing for rooming housing. And it's basically a temporary housing situation for this particular time. The reason I think it would be a good idea is because instead of the city taking on the burden of the property management, et cetera, there's already an existing landowner that could potentially add eight to 16 beds for temporary housing for homeless people within a fairly short amount of time. The city would have to be willing to want to go forward with something like that and encourage people that have property to develop their property. I know it's expensive to house people in those situations, but I think it's going to be expensive to house people in whatever it is that you guys have already been planning on doing. My five minutes got to be anything close. Who, if anybody would be the best person to communicate with to get involved and learn a little bit more about where you guys are today?
Actually, I would be.
I was actually.
Contact on that, yeah.
I was going to come see you today, but I didn't want to interrupt you during workday, but maybe.
Love to, if you can get some information and I'll be glad to contact you and we can get some information out to you. But I would, one-on-one, I'd rather talk to you on stuff. So if you give me your information, I would love to have a conversation with you.
Some of the ideas I'd really like to get a little.
Yeah, as, as, as a city and as an individual that's been involved in the homelessness for quite a long time, I encourage any citizens to come forward and give us some, you know, good ideas, bright ideas. Because it's, this is a, an issue that is not just our city, but it's, it's nationwide. It affects the West Coast, the biggest majority of the homeless individuals are in the West Coast. So I think the last statistic showed that 70% of homelessness is in the West Coast. So it's, it's a huge issue on our neck of the woods and it's, it's not going away anytime soon. And there's definitely some avenues that we can approach and there's definitely things that are, that are going on that I'd love to share with you.
Yeah, so I believe in accountability, a work program. I know I asked a question today that somebody was very familiar with the situation of how many people that she was aware of that were actually capable of working and earning a living. And she said, without a doubt, there's five or six within one of those spots. So I know that's, they're not going to go out there and start applying for jobs. It has to be a program and it has to be something that somebody is dedicated to. So I'm not saying I'm that person, but I would like to talk to you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much. I appreciate that, Jay. And before you leave, if you end up leaving early, would you give Arthur their, your information to contact you? I'd appreciate that. Thank you. Awesome. Well, is there any more public comments? Come on forward. It doesn't, doesn't have to be with just what we're talking about now. It could be other stuff too.
This is actually what we're talking about now.
Yes.
Okay. My name is Ann Doogie and I'm a retired social worker. And we used to say it was in the trenches. And in the trenches meant that we dealt with people with very few resources. And the ones that stand out in my mind as the most vulnerable are the children, the teenagers, the ones who have graduated from foster care into a world of really nothing. And through no fault of their own. It's a population that is worth saving. It's a population that has promise and it's a population that it breaks my heart for us to call them the throwaway children. And that's truly what they have become. And I know as a society, I know for myself, many times we say the children are our future, but what do we really do to invest in these children? Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that, Ann. We have very, somebody very important here today. You're not going to take on your, your political.
Although, although I'm still dressed for my meeting earlier. Supervisor Nancy O'Grand, District Four.
Thank you for coming.
Hi folks. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I very much appreciate your comments. And you guys taking the time to listen. This whole problem is very important to me. God, we're already getting emotional. As you just said, this group of kids is, they're lost. We lose that, we had this discussion last night. That group of 17, 18 to 25 gets lost. They don't have support. They don't have help. They don't have an agency to help them if they can't find a way to help themselves. We need to find a way to help them. We need to find a way to house them. We need to find a way to keep them in the system. And this seems to be a way to do that, even six at a time. If we can help those six, if we can get them housed, if we can get them moving forward with any sort of job, any sort of self-confidence, any sort of, whether it's mental health assistance, medical help, whatever they need, we can move them through the system and help them give back to our society and that's exactly what we need to do. And we have the means to do it. And this is within the next two months, we can, we can work to do that quickly and without cost apparently to the city and maybe even with a little money back to the city if we can make it work. The county has the agencies and the resources to help administratively at this point. I've got a few calls out to see if there's other ways that we can do that. We have the No Place Like Home project that's already in the works. Hopefully within the next two years, that's going to be up and running and that's huge. We have a few other programs in the works. There's funding out there. I haven't been able to dial in on it yet. I've been making phone calls frantically before I got here and haven't gotten answers for you. But this is really, really important and I hope we can help with your support, your support, your support. I'm here to help in any way possible. So I'll stop there. I won't take any more.
Thank you. Thanks. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I could to piggyback on what Nancy just said, the No Place Like Home project, the city of Huayriaca also pledged funding to help with that project. So I'm not sure where that funding is coming from, but you know, our, our previous city manager had pledged. So I know that the county has the lion's share of the funding, but our share of the funding was going in to help with the, the No Place Like Home.
Oh. That was on. You had it on. Now I think you have it off, actually.
Now, can you hear me?
Corey? Now you can. How about that?
Can you hear me?
You woke the dog up now.
And, and I, I'm not sure, you know, we pledged funding for that and I'm not sure where that funding would come from, if it's part of this funding or not, but we'll have to ask staff.
Well, yeah, there, there's some intricacies on that, but the No Place Like Home actually is, through the county, actually is getting utilized.
Yes.
There actually have some programs that we've discussed on that. So there is.
Well, I mean, the county has their share of the money, but the city also pledged to help. Yes.
Thank you. Is there any more public comments? I thank you for the public comments. Come on down.
Yeah, come on down.
Hello, my name is Breanna Myers and I'm the camp coordinator at YES, the Youth Empowerment Siskiyou. And I see all kinds of kids come through our office doors that need a safe place and need resources and we don't have the answers. And this is a answer that could put money where it belongs and roofs overheads, even if it is six at a time, five at a time, whatever it takes. It makes a big difference and this is a great opportunity for the city to step up and be a team player with an organization that's working hard to provide more resources. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Hello, my name is Barbara Rizling. As a former child of neglect, homeless runaway, and foster youth, I was deeply saddened to see that the city had decided to not take advantage of the available funds to help the homeless in the community. To see our people struggling to stay warm and unable to access the most basic resources heartbreaking. There have been deaths every year in Siskiyou County from people freezing to death. Now that there's a possibility to possibly prevent these deaths, I think that, you know, we all really need to step up and take that Youth Empowerment Siskiyou has put in the work and made necessary steps to create a safe place to address the needs of youth living on the streets. All that is being asked is that you apply for the pooled permanent local housing application.
Thank you, Barbara. Appreciate that.
I was going to say, you need to correct that.
Yeah.
That's not true.
There hasn't been anything saying that we're not going to do that by no means, by no means. So just, just to clarify that, but thank you so much for that statement. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jack Lanucci. I also am backing this project. I work for the United Way, which is a very large nonprofit. And Siskiyou County is one of the nine counties that we represent of the Northern California United Way. I was tasked here about a month or two ago from my CEO to figure out what and how we're going to be involved with Siskiyou for next year. Homelessness has always been on my heart and on my mind. I've been watching everything that's been going on. And of course, it's my job to make sure I make good recommendations. I was at the COC meeting, same that was Dwayne was, and I heard Sarah speak and I also heard Rachel speak. I think she's up there somewhere.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just on the, the video.
Okay, so once I heard their presentation, I decided that this is how United Way is going to be getting involved. You know, homelessness itself is very difficult. I'm not going to say anything you don't already know. It's my job to make sure that United Way spends the money in the right place. And I already know that they are in the wings and ready to back this program. They love it. And so I just wanted you all to know that we, as in United Way, are kind of waiting to see what the cities do and what the county does. And so I just wanted you all to know that we, as in United Way, are kind of waiting to see what the cities do and what the county does. So my two cents.
Thank you, Jaclyn. Thank you for your involvement in United Way, too. It's your valuable asset. It's been very good working with you on our meetings and stuff. Thank you. Awesome. Is there anybody else?
Hi, I'm Rachel. I work with Youth Empowerment Siskiyou. Excuse me, I'm really sick, so it's kind of hard to understand me. I just wanted to say that I work personally with these youth. I've had a lot of conversations with them, a lot of good, funny moments. But I've also sat there when they've asked me, you know, when we go through plans of like, you know, do you have a place to stay tonight? Are you going to be warm tonight? And, you know, hearing, I don't know, or I'm not completely sure, or like, I think so tonight. It hits you in a different way, and I know that a lot of people aren't faced with those questions daily. But I just want to urge everybody to remember that just because they're not in your mind daily, doesn't mean they aren't being asked daily. Doesn't mean that there aren't a lot of, you know, plans that go into just making sure a child is safe through like another 24 hours. And yeah, I mean, I went outside the other night at about 3:00 AM. And it was it was cold, you know, I couldn't be out there for more than 10 minutes maybe. And it made me think about, you know, youth that I've come across that have slept in their cars that are just trying to find a couch to sleep on. So I would just urge you guys to keep that in mind while making a decision.
Thank you, Brittany.
That was Rachel, sorry.
Hi, I'm Brittany Collier, and I work for County Office of Education, specifically with homeless youth program in our county. And so I also wanted to say that it definitely is something that is kind of like a hidden epidemic within our county, but I love that Youth Empowerment Siskiyou. They've been a great collaboration with our program to facilitate needs outside of the educational sphere, and they've done a great job of addressing those needs. We can work, we have funding to help kids with educational homeless youth get enrolled in schools and kind of address barriers to education, but that's our scope. And so beyond that, there is very minimal resources. And if anybody's ever worked with youth, sending or with families and sending a child home, knowing that they may not have a safe place, a safe place to sleep is a very, you know, that's the stuff that keeps people up at night. So I just am really, we've had good collaboration with sending our youth to them to help with just basic need services, and we really appreciate the city supporting what their causes.
Awesome. Thank you. Anybody else? Just real quick, because you've been up on so one.
I just had a, Jerry Stocker, just had an additional thought all day long. Obviously, there's a shortage of beds, and the goal is to get enough beds to satisfy the need. But I think if there's this much interest in this many people compassionate about this, let's like shoot for more than enough beds. So there's never a shortage. I think that we ought to be able to accomplish that.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any other comments at this time? I just like, I'd like to make a comment actually on on this myself. A number of years ago, my stepson had a friend that after he graduated that this young this young gal, her parents divorced and moved away and basically left her unattended here. Very talented young gal. But she basically was faced with the same same problems that we're talking about here that she if she didn't have a place to go, she would have been on the streets. So we took her in. It was it was amazing. This young gal was, like I said, extremely talented. She went on to go to New York and did art shows and went over into Paris and did art shows there. Extremely amazing young gal. And like I said, this is near and dear to my heart just because of stuff like that. If she wouldn't have had that hand up, that it's hard to say where she would have ended up at. So it's neat to see that there's individuals, people out there that want to help these kids because these there's a lot more kids out there than people realize that are that are sleeping on the streets and and what they call it, couch surfing. It happens all the time. It's it's quite frequent, and it's sad to see because these these kids are our future, just like they stated. These are our future of our country, and unless we change that path that they're on right now, this our future will go downhill. So this is something we need to address. I know, like I said, we're discussing this, we, just so the public knows that we are having a meeting about this on Friday to speak with our fine, our new finance director that's coming in. And we're going to figure out what this entails. While I'll be getting a hold of Sarah and letting her know what's going on there about this meeting and whatnot. So we'll be moving forward on how are we going to address this as a council as a whole. But we are going to discuss what that means and what it will entail as a as a city and what that will work, how we can work out the details. But this is where we're at as a city right now. We can't make a decision tonight. But we will be getting back to everybody and letting them know what's the direction we're going to be going. If we, if it needs to be a special meeting, I think, as I can't speak for the rest, but I is is the rest of council willing to do a special meeting, if that's what it takes to to go over the details on this.
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, before I say yes, folks. Thank you for everybody who spoke regarding this. Yeah, we do kind of forget about how lucky we have it when we get into a warm house and a warm bed at night. One thing I'm concerned, you know, I want to I want to move forward with this because I think it's very important. But one thing I'm concerned about, and if I may ask a question, I'm not pointing fingers or trying to be mean, is that the if we've noticed about May, March, and this is just be, this is brought to me for the very first time as a council member. I have not heard about this at all. And we've had, it's been a turbulent year for a city, not your fault. We've had a lot of meetings where it's thrown down our throat to say, we need this now because our deadline is coming up. And we will work hard because it's important, but I just want to know why, if it's been since March, why nobody's from, yes, any organization has come to us and said, hey, we just received this. We have until the end of the year. I'm not pointing fingers or trying to be mean. Yes, you can respond, because here we are at November fifth. And we have less than 45 days.
So I actually just learned about it like the last week of October myself and then and then dropped jumped on it. So this isn't a part of the funding that we typically track because we're not an eligible applicant, right? It has to be cities and counties. The county did inform me, though, that they reached out to the city of Wairega when they did their application earlier this year to see if the city would want to pool funds with them and that the city turned them down. So so maybe, but yeah, I would say also that that's, I mean, there's, I would say that that's probably city processes, right? When you're flat, when staff is flagging funding opportunities or things like that. But it was actually, somebody brought, somebody just was brought it to my attention a couple of weeks ago when I was talking about the need for operating expenses. And they're like, have you heard of this pot of money? And I'm like, I've never heard of it before. And then that's when I started going around to the cities. Yeah.
Okay, we thank you for bringing it.
Thank you so much for bringing it together. Like I said, this is the first time I've heard about it or seen this material. So so answer a question before, yes, I would support having a special meeting on this.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
So Brittany, are you still on the line?
I am.
So Brittany, as the liaison for homeless, do we still get McKinney Vento dollars from the federal government in this county?
We do.
And what are the McKinney Vento dollars slated for?
For McKinney Vento, it's just to remove educational barriers. It's a school of origin rights, enrollment, immediate enrollment rights, and transportation. So basically, if a student was enrolled at Wairega School and they moved to Montague due to homelessness, the school, we can support transportation to for that student to remain in their school of origin. So mostly just removing barriers to education so that they can maintain connectedness to their schools and maintain enrollment.
Okay, so then I used to be aware of all this when Coco was still there and I was in education. Do, when you do your homeless count, I know that when we did ours at Jackson Street in Wairega Elementary, we didn't delineate between unaccompanied homeless and accompanied homeless. A homeless person was a homeless person. Do you, because it looks like this this is for unaccompanied homeless people. So do you guys at the school level with, I know you work with all the schools, do you delineate between an unaccompanied thirteen to eighteen-year-old and an accompanied thirteen to eight-year-old?
Yeah, so, yes, we do actually. So a student is identified as homeless through their enrollment process or if it's brought to the attention of the school staff. But that delineation is made within the state reporting database. And so there is like a dropdown that they have to indicate what what type of homeless student is this? So unaccompanied youth is one of the dropdowns in that section, so we can actually track that real number. The problem with the school identification system, again, that has to be, it's typically done at enrollment, so we do lose numbers during that process as and if a student does not disclose that information to anybody, or it is not found out by any school staff to be indicated that way, then that information will not be reported accurately. But yes, there is a way to see the see the two numbers. And McKinney Vento homeless indicators are different than general homeless indicators.
So then do schools, if a child, when I was principal at Jackson Street School, in high school and at the at the elementary level, sometimes children would choose to leave their parents and they'd couch surf. Is that considered, if the child makes the choice, is that considered an unaccompanied minor?
Yes, and it depends on, sometimes an unaccompanied minor will show up at the beginning of the school year to enroll themselves, living with another relative or a friend or family. That's considered an unaccompanied minor because that child is not living with a legal parent or guardian. So there's nobody that's legally responsible for that child that is taking care of that child. That child is essentially on their own. As Dwayne said, couch surfing, and so they're under the supervision of another adult. But that is not always consistent in that child's life. Since there's no legal obligation to that child, people are kind and friendly, and they will help out, typically will help out. But there's oftentimes, if there's any situations, even in that home where the child needs to leave, there's not very many options for that child to go to.
Well, from an educational standpoint, there still is a parental legal obligation. Unless the parents have voided their parental rights and a surrogate parent has been approved. That's that's why I'm asking if that's, if they leave on of their own volition, the parents are still legally their parents and they they have not, their their rights have not been abrogated. So when you have an audit, does that then mean that does does the federal government look at your numbers or not and to see, do they scrutinize them that close?
They're looking for whether or not the student is living in the home of their parent or legal guardian. Not necessarily that the parent legal guardian isn't making educational decisions for them. So that person would still be included in informational, as far as making educational decisions, if for some reason that parent is not located. So we've had incidents where parents have died this past year, and there's no legal parent or guardian. So we're kind of in this weird zone where then a surrogate parent would be assigned by the county, or sometimes it's tribal youth, so it's a tribal court will assign a surrogate parent. But as far as their legal rights to that child as in enrollment and stuff like that, still there. We would have, the school would have, for auditing processes, the school would have a caregiver affidavit signed. Typically, that's done to allow for that parent, that that individual that's caretaking for that child to have some sort of involvement in that piece.
Well, and you've answered my question because the difference between a child who has left but still has the parental rights, whether they're tribal or not, would still qualify to go into a shelter under under NOFA or whatever. So that that answers my question. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate the question, too. It's very, it shows the intricacy of what a lot of this goes through, but there's definitely a huge need for it, for sure. So, all right, unless there's any other public comments, we will move on. Any other public comments? All right. Then we will go on to the consent agenda. All matters under the consent agenda are considered routine and non-controversial and will be enacted under one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the public wishes to comment on an item. A, approval of ratification payments issued from October 25th, 2021 through November 7th, 2020, 21, excuse me. B, approval of minutes for the regular meeting held on November 2nd, 2021. C, approval of the minutes of the special meeting held on November 8th, 2021. D, continuation of urgency number 864 of the fireworks. E, waive full text readings of all ordinances on the agenda. Ordinances shall be introduced and adopted by title only. Thanks, you guys. Yes, Mr. McCloy. All right, we have a motion by Paul McCoy.
I'll second it.
In a second.
Joan Smith Freeman.
The second. All right.
Hear me now?
Thanks again, you guys.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
All right, we have a motion in a second. I'll go do roll call at this point in time. Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Milton.
Aye.
Debbie Baird.
Aye.
And I, Dwayne K. Seven A. Let's see. Okay, number five.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Before we move on?
Yes.
I'm good with all of that, but on D, weren't we going to discuss some change for the fireworks? Are we going to put that on the?
Yes, I would say, I would, I would ask.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
So about the next to the next agenda?
Sounds good.
Okay, I'll write that down. Did you get that, Arthur? To have the fireworks to bring back up on the next agenda? Thank you.
That's what you said, not Salem.
Correct.
Or both. We don't want to do both.
Salem is regulated by.
Right. I think we need to discuss it, though, but.
Yes, and for sure inviting our chief.
Fire chief.
Yes, yes, absolutely, absolutely. D, excuse me. Yes.
And maybe notifying Rain Rock, you know, aren't they the event planner for that night?
Yes.
Maybe letting know that's on table, maybe Crystal Science.
Chamber.
Thank you. All right.
Fast as you can.
Yes, Mr. McCloy.
And and then, Mr. Mayor, could we have either the fire chief or Arthur bring the section of the state fire code that deals with the sale of fireworks? Because so we can know what we're, if we're approving a sale of fireworks and the state's saying we can't, you know, they can't sell them, we just need to know it.
Okay. Great, thank you. I'm glad we're bringing that up, actually. Yeah.
I'd like him to make that I remember.
You did. Good job.
Actually, yeah, it did need to be brought back up. Okay, now we're going to move into the public hearing, this discussion, possible action, the shopping cart ordinance. Second reading of the ordinance of the city of Wairega, amending Title V and adding the Title V and acting chapter 5.25 pertaining to the shopping cart control and finding the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA. So I'm opening this up now to the public hearing part of this. Is there any public comments? You do? Okay, well, then I will close the public hearing part of this and open it back up for discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I think we've discussed this ad nauseam. I think we've been working on this for what, about the last six or eight months, maybe? And I did look it over, and even though at first blush, it might look a little harsh. And I know it does say in here that it, the charge, the fee after letting them know and after three days is $50 per cart per day. I think that what we're really trying to do is just get the stores to be responsible for their own carts. We're not trying to be punitive. We're trying to clean up the town. So I'm hoping that the stores take it in that spirit, is that we just want to work with them in partnership and make sure that they can pick up their own property so that we don't have to haul it to the dump.
Well, yeah, and that's, as I'm writing, if I may add on to that, I was out to the city yard here just recently again and didn't actually count the carts this time, but we have well over 200. We're up around the 300 range of shopping carts sitting at the city yard right now. So unfortunately, the biggest contributor is one business in town. I'm not going to name names, but I think we all know. But unfortunately, what happens with these carts is that these carts end up being used as trash carts. And then our city staff ends up picking them up, taking the. And then our city staff ends up picking them up, taking the trash and getting, getting rid of the trash. And the man hours that go into this um are needed to be addressed. And that's what this ordinance is, is actually addressing is how we can um fix this problem. And this is not a new problem. This, they do this in others, a lot of other cities. Medford passed this ordinance, oh, it's been a couple, three years ago, they did it. And it helped, definitely helped with the problem of the shopping carts around there, around that area. It actually helped tremendously around Medford area. Um, but it also gets it to where we can re, get reimbursed for some of our staff time that's um contributes to this. And that's, that's the biggest thing. And accountability, like, like Joan was saying, accountability is huge, that it puts accountability back on these. Um, for those who don't know, that it, it does not affect any um businesses that have less than ten shopping carts. So if somebody has only eight shopping carts, it does not affect them. So, but you'd be surprised on what you, uh, where you find some of these shopping carts. Last time we talked about this, um, we had a um, like, when I went out to the yard, I, I discussed that our, with the council and everybody, that I found a shopping cart from Kmart.
Oh, we don't have a Kmart.
No. No. And we have, yeah, never have. In fact, neither does, neither does Medford already. So. That is, yeah, it's been quite a while. So that's, that's one of the things we're dealing with is shopping carts that are on the move from different areas. And it's, and it's a burden for our city and we need to address it. And that's what we're doing at this point in time. So um, in conjunction, I don't know if the council has any more comments. Yes, Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, if I might, I, I, I'm gonna agree with uh, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Smith Freeman um, in that it, it, the language may seem strong, but it's not. And actually, um, I can tell you that when we had the, what, we have four hundred out there the last time, Mayor? And I, I, what, we have four hundred out there the last time? We had one business with two hundred and seventy seven of them.
Well, with two, no, we had two something on one business.
And, and I went to each of the businesses, some of them three times, one of them seven times. And they were very appreciative of it. The one that was seven times was a, I think the home office was not uh aware of it, yes. And the thing that I shared with them is that the city was looking at and would be enacting a card ordinance. And the managers at each one of them said, hey, good. I mean, two of them, Dollar General and the Dollar Store said, this is great, we're gonna let our, we, we, we have another stores, we'd love to have it here. We're gonna let our, our brass know. So it wasn't something that the, in Rayleigh's too, it was like, hey, we appreciate that. We, we don't want to lose these carts, they're too expensive.
We started doing them.
So, so they're aware of it, that the larger ones will, you know, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. I, you know, I think I did the math on it last time and we're up to, what was it, like fifty grand, fifty some grand, just on the one cart owner? So that's, that's a lot of money to be setting out there. And then that is, because those, their, their carts, from what I, the research that I did, was their carts ranged anywhere from fifty to a hundred and fifty dollars, depending on what cart they were, and that's the, the small ones were the fifty, a hundred and fifty were the, the larger carts. So they, yeah, they had an, a high amount of uh, the higher end cart sitting out here. So it's quite costly and it's very surprising that they don't want to uh do more about it. But this, um, like I said, with this ordinance is hopefully it will um encourage them to uh do something about their carts and uh might encourage another business. I, I know I've spoken with a couple other individuals that it might be, there's uh um people out there that uh collect these carts and they get paid for doing that. So, yep, a cart collection service. And I know one individual was, was uh interested in that, so it's like, hey, that's a good, could be a good little business. Exactly. So at this point in time, is there any other uh comments from the council? Yes, Mr. Middleton?
All I want to say is I am very excited for this to finally come to light because when I ran for city council the first time, that was one of the things I was running on as when I was, before I moved back to Warricka, after being gone to Sacramento, coming into town. Like I told my mom, like, oh my gosh, look at all these carts being driven down the street with people and it was happening, you know? Then I started noticing, this never happened before. And that's what, one of the things I wanted to see is this ordinance come. Um, when I wasn't elected, Duane took over, um, because I did speak at the podium, um, as a citizen at the time, saying that I would like someone to continue or the city continue doing this. And here we are now, three years later.
Oh, you mean it wasn't?
No. That we've been working on the.
Yeah.
Ordnance for a little bit, but getting to this point's been a long time, so I'm very excited. And like I said, it's not harsh by all means. Every city I was in in Sacramento had them, these big retailers had them. This is no surprise to them. They can do it in other cities, they can do it here. So I'm very excited to see us move on with this.
And another thing we need to emphasize, this is not an ordinance to punish the homeless, it's not to do this. This ordinance is to be, I know, and I just want to make that, I just want to make that clear that this is not to punish the homeless. This is an ordinance to put back the responsibility back on the shopping cart owners to make sure they do their due diligence and make sure they're collecting properly and not left out there for us to collect. So, um, okay, we're at that point. What's the wishes of the council?
It's a second hearing.
I know, is there, there's nothing else we need to do, so we're, I think we're, just move forward unless there's any other protests on it, so.
See anybody protesting.
Okay. So then we will move on then. Great. Um, new business. We are on to discussion possible action, human resources. Adopt a resolution of the city council, the city of Warricka approving execution of the exclusion of longevity pay amendment to January twenty twenty men, memorandum of understanding between the city of Warricka and the Warricka Employees Association. And this one's John.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, could I have your attention for a minute?
What's that?
Did, um, can I have your attention for a minute? Did you actually call for a vote on that ordinance?
Do we need to?
Yes.
Okay.
I thought it was the second one.
It says second, it says second reading.
Yeah, I know, that's the adoption.
Okay. Well then, the wishes of the council.
Wait one.
One second.
Oh, I'll move to approve as presented.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to uh prove it as presented. Do a roll call at this point in time. Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Milton.
Aye.
Debbie Baird. Duane K. Aye. Thank you. Okay, now we're past that point. Thank you, John, for waiting.
Don't worry. So good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here to talk about the longevity pay, the exclusion of the longevity pay from the Warricka Employees Memorandum of Understanding. And uh, just talk about a couple key points. We've been working on this for the past few months, been working with CalPERS, when we're working with our city attorney and the association. Um, longevity pay presents a couple of different issues as far as what specialty pay and CalPERS reporting. Feel it's in the best interest and we've come, come up with a solution. If you've noticed in the um side letter attached with the staff report, um, that we've worked with the association with to eliminate the um longevity portion from the salary table and replace it with a merit step or step G. Additionally, part of what drives this, which is attached in the uh staff report, is the circular letter uh two hundred dash zero one nine dash two zero. Um, and that gives some specific directions to longevity pay on page two, um, which drives part of the purpose of why we're doing this. And um, from an administrative standpoint and a reporting standpoint, I think it's in the best interest of the city to um move forward with the removal of longevity pay, which will be consistent with all of our other memorandums of other, of understanding.
Awesome. Thank you so much, John.
Perfect.
I know, it's uh, you've put a lot of effort into this and I appreciate that. And we, we appreciate you here tonight too. Thank you so much.
Absolutely happy to hear.
Is there any uh comments from the council?
No, sir, we've reviewed it twice and this is the third time, so.
Okay. Absolutely.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yes, Joe.
I'll make the recommended motion if you're ready.
Yes.
Okay, the recommended motion that we adopt a resolution for the city council, the city of Warricka approving execution of the memorandum of understanding between the city of Warricka and the Warricka Employees Association.
Councilperson tonight, I'll second the motion.
Motion in a second. Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Milton.
Aye.
Debbie Baird.
Aye.
And I, Duane K. Thank you. And we do, you might as well stay up there.
Yeah, I might as well stay up.
And we'll do the seven B, discussion possible action, human resources. Adopt the, a city of Warrick Economic Communications Resource Policy that encompasses employees, volunteers, and elected officials.
Absolutely. So we, um, another project we've been working on, um, and this one is, has, I think we've been, I believe we've been working on this for the last couple of years. Um, I did also with the Warrick Employees Association. And uh, we've been working back and forth and we've come up with a uh final draft to adopt for an electronic communication resources policy that YEA has reviewed as well as city staff and the city attorney and that we've worked with uh Lieber Cassidy Whitmore with. And I think it's an essential policy, we need it, we need some structure. It sets a clear line between um, from a uh, for behavior, for behavior and conduct um, as well as security and maintaining public records. Um, it also is there to protect not only city employees, volunteers, but as well as elected officials. And this is an ever-growing resource as far as electronic communication phones and other devices. And um, I think this policy sets the framework to um have a policy that's accountable for the, for the entire city.
Awesome. Thank you, John.
Absolutely. It's also, and I'm, sorry, apologize. Um, it was also a deliverable item from our twenty twenty negotiations uh that we've been working on and that's part of the, the two-year process.
Oh.
And um. Absolutely. It's mutual effort.
All righty, is there any comments or questions from the council? Great, then I will ask for a motion or.
This is Debbie Baird. I will read the recommended motion um, that the city council, the city of Warricka approve execution of the electronic communication resources policy between the city of Warricka and the respective bargaining units.
Second that motion.
Second. Roll call. It's Joan.
Aye.
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 Debbie Baird.
Aye.
And I, Duane K. Awesome.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Thank you, John. Thank you for your time. Thank you for being here.
Good job.
So now we are on to seven C, discussion possible action finance, June's treasurer's report.
And I think Rhonda's on the.
I think she is. Rhonda?
Yeah, good evening.
Hello there.
Hi, Rhonda.
Are you still there?
I am. Kit, does everybody hear me?
Now we have you.
Okay, great. Good evening, council members. Um, just wanted to bring forward to you the um June and July cash reports. As you can see, we're holding cash balances steady and right, little over twenty-eight million. And um, they're a little delayed in getting to you as um we're closing books and do all the inter-fund transfers first before presenting this to you. Um, but um, just have before you the cash balances for your consideration and can answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Rhonda. There's, it's a lot there again, but um, I know you, you put in a lot of work and we appreciate all the time and effort you put into this. It's, the numbers are always crazy when we hear them and it's like, oh my goodness, but Rhonda has always been on top of it. We're lucky to have her.
We're gonna miss her.
I know, that's, I don't even want to say that, so. We're not gonna miss her. She's just taking a.
I'm very picky about our replacement and I think um you've got some good talent coming on board. Um, so I think I'll be good hands.
Well, we're still gonna miss you.
Yes.
Are you not going to still be our treasurer?
She's still be our treasurer.
So you'll.
All right, is there any questions from the council at this point in time?
Now, do we need a motion?
We do, and we have two different ones we have to do.
Yeah. The second one.
Well, I got.
Seven C, it's a seven C and seven D.
I just got the paperwork. Somebody else, go ahead. One that I have is on the electronics.
Oh.
Yeah.
I see. I didn't either. They written motion. This is Debbie Baird. I would like to um make a motion to accept the treasurer's report for the city council from June twenty twenty one as presented.
Okay. Motion for June's treasurer report. Debbie Baird, we have a second. And we have a second, Joan. All righty, we'll do a roll call again. Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Milton.
Aye.
Debbie Baird.
Aye.
I, Duane K. All right, now we'll move on to seven D. Is there any questions on that one? If not, we'll make a, a motion on that one too, which is July's treasurer report.
Looks good. Corey, are you gonna make the motion or could you want me to?
Oh, I thought you were gonna.
Go ahead. Oh, no, okay. Well, then I'll make, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make the, I make a motion to accept the treasurer's report from uh July to present, twenty twenty one.
I don't think that includes present.
It's no presence. Okay.
Just July then?
July.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a motion, we have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Corey Milton. Joan Smith Freeman.
Aye.
Paul McCoy.
Aye.
Corey Milton.
Aye.
Debbie Baird.
Aye.
And I, Duane K. All right, awesome. Thank you, thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Thank you, Rhonda.
Hey.
Now we're on to city manager and staff reports. We haven't heard much from Randy. I guess he's still there.
He's pretty quiet. Oh, you have to unmute him. There you go.
I have no report at this time.
You don't?
I be, will be having a report later in your meeting.
Yes, you will. That report probably don't want to hear, but that's okay. Thank you. Is there any other staff that wants to do a report? Chief? He's like, no, no, no. Okay, well then we will open it up for council reports then. Joan? I caught you.
It's my dinner, pretzels. Um, so it's been a, a pretty busy week, uh, two weeks. As you know, I volunteered to do the Read Across Siski, uh, which, which is part of the Read Across America. And so I was invited to go down to Weed on a very rainy night um for the Siski media council. And they did a, a video. And when I, when I got there, there were judges and there were all different types of people from all over the county that were doing their reading all day long. They spaced everybody out. And so that was, that was, I really enjoyed that. That was fun. But my actual in-person reading to kids is going to be tomorrow. And tomorrow I'm going to be reading to the Lane, Lane Street Children's Center and Chrysalis, and Chrysalis. And so I'm looking forward to that. It's the same book that they presented to all of us and I always enjoy reading to the kids. It's so much fun. Um, also, uh, let's see, I'm in ninth, I had the Siski um County Local Transportation Commission meeting that supervisor, Supervisor Nancy was at. And uh, anyway, I thought it was a good meeting. We had a lot of discussion and um, we found out that there's more money, yet more money available funding for roads, which is really good uh for us since we have probably more roads than any other city in the county, I think. So um, we are, Green Dot um is uh, is acting as our executive director of that and they, uh, they are applying for all the funding that we can get. Also, on the eleventh, I think you all know, was Veterans Day. So happy Veterans Day, a little late to all of you veterans out there. We had a veterans dinner at the Elks, uh, and there were about fifty veterans there. A lot of veterans and their families. And so, yeah, we had um a nice, nice group of people. And the chef, the cook was also a veteran, uh, Joanne Bergeron. Leo Bergeron started. And so she, she cooked the meal, so that was, that was really neat. And she got a really nice cake that said, thank you for your service, big cake from Rayleigh's. Um, also, and then the next day was John and Lisa Nixon's um store opening. Actually, that was Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. They had three days of it. I stopped by on Wednesday and then uh again on Friday and that was, you know, that was really nice. It's a beautiful store. It's a beautiful store, and I wish them well. I think they'll do well with it. Then, on the fifteenth, I had a Cal Cities, Lake of California Cities Zoom meeting, which was to discuss the proposed strategic priorities for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And so, those are, are coming. There's a lot of discussion, and of course, as you know, homelessness is right at the top of the list for every single city in the entire state. So, yeah, there was a lot of discussion about that and, and requests for funding. So, and, and then, yeah, oh, and I don't know how many of you are aware, but there is going to be an open house at the Carnegie Building that the EDC is putting on, on Friday from ten AM to noon, and I would encourage you all to go. They cleaned it up a little bit, but they didn't clean it up too much because they really did want to see the public to see what kind of condition it's in. So, the purpose of this open house is because of Giving Tuesday. They're looking for the public to chip in. Because, you know, the grants that they've received does require, you know, a match.
Community match.
A match, community match to show that there is support from the community. There's a lot of people that I think are pretty excited about that. Everywhere I've seen it, when, when they presented it at the Siski women in business, women in business got so excited, they, they donated five hundred dollars right on the spot.
Oh.
Right on the spot. So, I know that they've already got some donations, so that's really cool. Also, on the twentieth, which is the Saturday, is going to be a progressive dinner. Any of you that are interested starts at the Elks and then goes to the wine bar.
All right.
Yeah, and so, that should be really nice, and the officers are cooking, so I'll be cooking. And it's going to be a taco bar.
All right.
We're gonna have a taco bar and then some other goodies, too. And then, anyway, it should be nice. And I wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, it's coming up, and to let you all know, I don't know how many of us in here are seniors, but the Rotary Club of Guayrika does cook a meal for seniors, and I help with that every year. They're not going to be having it in person, but if you drive up to our community center and go around back, they're gonna have a drive-through. And then, those that are homebound that can't drive or can't get there, we will be delivering. I help deliver every year. And so, we donate, we, the Rotarians personally donate the turkeys and the pies and the potatoes and all that. So, I've gotta go buy my turkey to donate. So, that's gonna be fun for Thanksgiving. And then, as you know, the Saturday after Thanksgiving then is the holiday parade downtown Guayrika, I encourage you all to go to that, and all the businesses downtown are going to be open. It's going to start, I think, at ten o'clock in the morning, and they're going to have a teddy bear hunt, which should be fun for the kids, and they're going to have a snow princess contest, which should be fun. And then, of course, the parade. Right, and those of you that don't want to sit out in the cold, you are welcome to come to the Elks upstairs, the game room upstairs, the windows overlook right there at the corner, where the parade comes around the corner and right across from the fire department. So, you'll be able to see the tree lighting and the parade and be warm. And so, it's a potluck, so everybody's encouraged to come. And then, that's at four o'clock when the parade starts, and then, well, come at three. And then, at seven o'clock, there's going to be a band. So, if you like to dance, stay and dance at the Elks.
So, I'm guessing it's open to the public?
It is open to the public, you will sign them in downstairs. I have a member downstairs, Richard Rolzenski has volunteered and some others, and so you sign in downstairs and then you can come up. So, if you haven't been to the inside of the beautiful old Elks building, you should come in because it is a historic building in downtown Guayrika. It's beautiful. That's all.
Thank you, Joan. Paul McCoy?
I just want to thank Mayor Keg, Richard Rowan, and Steve Renner for helping to do the rough-in electrical on the shelter and saving Beacon of Hope around between eight and ten thousand dollars.
Well, we need, we need to do, give credit where credit is due, Paul. You've spent a lot of hours helping out, getting that up. You, yes, and I, yes, I think, that's because, thank you. I mean, he's trying to give credit to other people, but Paul has spent a lot of hours, a lot of hours from the get-go putting up beams and doing that. Now, like I said, doing the rough-in electrical, him and Steve Renner are just relentless on getting stuff done, and it's, it's awesome to see them making such huge progress. They started doing insulation now, uh, yeah. So, all the rough-in electrical's done, like you said, and it's, and it's thanks, thanks to him, I mean, he worked all this last weekend, he worked clear through the weekend, he worked the weekend before, all through the weekend, so it's, it's cool to see some progress getting done, and that's awesome.
Good job.
Good job.
Yeah. It's, it was great to see some, some positive progress, and it's just, it's encouraging to know that, that there is light at the end of the tunnel, that we may be able to get this thing up and going soon, so that's, that's cool to see that it's gonna happen.
Yes.
No, it's, it's all, it's been a big effort, and thank you. All right, Mr. Milton?
I'll make it short, I don't have a whole lot tonight, but, um, I just want to thank this person who posted on the grapevine, her name is Maddie Robertson. She posted her and her friends picked up six bags of trash near the grocery outlet, and that was, actually, it was in Weed, but I want to, someone posted recently, I want to give her a shout-out for the town of Weed, but also, I want to, there's been some people who I've missed that posted that have gone above and beyond in our city, too, going out picking up trash and helping out, and they haven't been recognized. Because I know it does get bad by the high school, I watch some kids just throw their trash, and I want to call them out, but as well, my, my, oh my gosh, I just, you know, because they're eating, going to all the thors, just tossing it right there. So, there's been a lot of people who have been involved in our community, in our city, and it just makes a difference when citizens step up instead of complaining because all our resources are limited, and when citizens really step up, it's noticed. So, I want to, you know, acknowledge her for in the weed, because a lot of people in Guayrika commented saying they went to other areas and did the same. And I, they cut off the comments because of my photo, but there is a few places in Guayrika that citizens have gone recently and picked up trash, a lot of it. So, I just want to thank the citizens who care about our city, who take time, and it's frustrating, you know, they kind of, so, you know, but they're doing it. So, I want to thank them for caring about our cities. And, like I said, I can't believe it's almost Thanksgiving. Kind of crazy, one year on the seventeenth, I'm wrapping up one year here, but being sworn in, it's hard to believe. It feels like.
Ten years.
Three years, ten years, five. I joke, um, yeah, this has aged me a little bit, but, but it's, so far, it's been a great ride, it's been a bumpy one, but I've enjoyed it, but it's, it's hard to believe because I was getting, you know, some memories of being elected, and I was, gosh, I can't believe this year has gone by. It's crazy, so I'm looking forward for the new year, I'm hoping we can move ours as a city in a positive direction coming up. We've had a lot of different issues, staff issues, but a lot of great things have happened, too. And I hope we don't focus on the negative, even though that tears us down. We have a great new chief of police who's taken our police department to a higher level than it's been in a long time. Hopefully, we will land a city manager soon. We, I hear, I see people on the grapevine saying no one's interested in the job, we have people interested in the job, one way or another, they have not made it. So, hopefully, we get someone who makes it to the finish line and we secure that person. So, when I was talking on the grapevine and people posting that no one wants to be here, that's not true. We have interviewed some great candidates, we've had great interests, and we continue to have great interest, and hopefully, we select that right person, and the right person wants to be here for our city. Other than that, like I said, I'm looking for the holidays, and hopefully, next year we get past the pandemic and a good year. You know, I've had, my parents have both had some health setbacks, but that continues to, and I'm just hoping for a better year for my family and everybody's family, so I'll end up with that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Debbie Barrett?
All right, mine's gonna be short, also, on the same line as what Cory was saying regarding community input on helping solve the problems that the staff doesn't, that city staff doesn't have time for because they're all ready, pushed to the limits on trying to take care of everything. Tammy Sullivan has had two young men help her at Green Horn Park, and they also went down on Minor Street and did some weaning, weeding there, and I wanted to say thank you for that. And I also wanted to say thank you to staff for filling in the gaps because it, we are aware of the extra pressure and constraints that are put on you because we're shorthanded, and we're, we're trying, but we want to get a good fit, and we wanted to go smooth for you, and we don't want to have to redo everything in six months, so we're trying to get it right the first time out of the box. And there was something, oh, yes, happy Thanksgiving. That's it.
Thank you, Debbie.
I know, I'm a senior plus.
I just want to add, too, with that, you know, my, if we're talking about city staff, you know, it's, we've been really fortunate to have a number of individuals step up to the plate, and it's, it's great to see. Thank you, John, for being here and presenting and doing that, and we just thank all of our city employees stepping up to the plate, and it's, it's, it's just, it's a blessing to have all of them doing this, because it's, I'll tell you what, it's a hard job, and it's, it's no rewards at the end of the day. They don't, they don't get any praise for it or nothing, they, yeah, they get paid for it, but they, they don't get any praise by the community, and all they get from the community is, what are you gonna do next? What are you fixing next? So, we thank you because you guys are awesome.
Yes. Yes.
I'll give you update, we, I had a point-in-time meeting today for the seven counties of the North State. We did finally approve the forms, and they're working on the app so we can do it, you know, through our phones and stuff. Yep, yep, so we're doing that, we did that the last two years, having the app. Of course, last year, we didn't do the unsheltered count, we just did the sheltered count only, but this year, we're going ahead with the sheltered and unsheltered count, so it was made official today. As far as, we are definitely moving forward, everything's a go-ahead, so I hope I have a good group of volunteers to head up the local here, the twenty-seventh, or, yeah, twenty-fifth, excuse me, of January is when our official start date is. I'll be having some meetings, so I'll be getting ahold of anybody that's interested or get ahold of me, if anybody's interested in actually going out and counting. January twenty-fifth.
Tuesday.
And it'll be, we'll be doing it a week, that week, uh, we also had on our point-in-time discussion, doing a summertime count, and it looks like some of the other counties are interested in doing a summertime count, too. Yeah. Well, big, the big point was there is some funding that could be utilized if I do a summertime account, so they seem like they're excited about that, so that'll be brought up on a future date, actually, February, we're gonna bring that back up to move forward on that on a summertime one, which will be in probably July. But yes, I think that'd be a huge benefit. One of the big benefits of doing the summertime one that was brought to the attention was doing, was because of the HMIS, homeless management information system, which could be beneficial for everybody on that, especially the counties. So, that was one of the big benefits of doing a summertime count, because it could boost our numbers for the HMIS, bringing a lot more numbers, will bring in a lot more money for the county and for everybody else, too, to address the homeless population. So, it's, could have its benefits, and I'm gonna keep pushing forward. I had a lot of resistance in the past on doing a summertime point-in-time count, but as most people know, that our numbers greatly increased during the summer months by far, approximately, well, this last summer increased probably thirty percent over the, over the year before, so it's getting, every year is getting more and more, and that's why we need to keep pushing forward on trying to address this issue. That's why, seeing this today with Sarah Springfield, and we need to, by, by addressing the youth population, we can head some of this off at the past to prevent it from being a future problem of theirs. And I, like I said, I'm a firm believer in helping the youth in whatever magnitude we can, because they are our future, and someday, we're gonna be sitting in the wheelchair, and they're the ones gonna be making the decision, so I think we need to look at that. So, um, a couple of other things I want to ask is, I know in the, here, you know, quite a few, a few months ago, we were talking about the, our code enforcement officer, and we were working as a city, we were talking about that Herzog property up there, and I don't know if any of the councils heard anymore, but I haven't heard anything, so I'd like that brought in an information thing, if that's all possible. Arthur, to bring that up on, for some information. Yes, Cory, you have something on that?
I was up there for business, and there was a dumpster in front of that.
So, there might be something going on.
So, I think there's something going on, I just don't know what's happening. But there was a dump, big dumpster, and some work being completed with.
Oh, good. Well, it's, yeah, I know.
But I don't know anything further.
Any other details, yeah.